I'm sorry, would you like to get started please? I apologize for the delay. We were in closed session for a different matter. Pursuant to New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118, and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, September 19th, 2017. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Merrick, please.
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Roll call, please.
Andriani.
Present.
Callie.
Present.
Dunn.
Here.
Dinoff.
Present.
Ellis Foster.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Singh. Weber.
Here.
DePrima.
Here.
Quorum exists.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. We all please rise for the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone please remain standing for a moment, for a moment of silence in memoriam. We move the Board to acknowledge the passing of Deborah V. Peterson, Power Professional, and Edie Colasano, Retired Secretary. We express our deepest sympathy to their family and friends. Thank you. Everyone please just sit. Okay, again, I apologize for the delay. It was only a couple of minutes. It wasn't that bad. Welcome back. I don't know where the summer went, but we're back in full swing. I hope everybody had a fantastic summer and a fantastic school opening. As usual, our Code of Ethics Corner, Mr. Dinoff, I believe. Oh, Mr. Reed, I apologize. Mr. Reed, please.
The Board members will uphold and enforce all rules and laws and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I'm so used to Jeff doing it, but, uh, sorry about that. Okay. I'm sorry? Oh, please.
Mrs. DePrima, I just want to let the public know there is one administrative correction, and that schedule is on the back table. And Board members, the administrative correction under finances reflected in your agenda. Thank you, Mr. DePrima.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Okay. We'll start off by approval of minutes. I need a motion, please.
I'll move it.
Mrs. Ellis Foster, and a second.
Andriani.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'm just gonna vote differently on each of them, because I wasn't here for the agenda, that's all.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Merrick.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Abstain.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Uh, no on the agenda session, yes on the regular session, and 50 percent on the third one. I was at one of the two. How do you do 50 percent?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? No on the agenda session.
No on the agenda session, yes on the regular meeting, and I was here for one of the closed sessions, so...
Do you know which one?
Twenty-second.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
And DePrima, sorry.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved.
Okay, we have a new student representative this year, Mr. Randall Anderson. Flows are yours. Welcome.
Sorry, this is my first time, clearly. How are you guys doing tonight? Okay, so, um, really, Student Senate is, um, working to push student involvement this year. We really want to continue, um, that Olbridge school spirit, and that's a major factor in a happy and healthy student. So, Mr. Sasso has been really, um, pushing respect in Olbridge. So, the first week of October, we're gonna have a Respect Week. As far as more upcoming events, we're going to have a Club Week, um, in, I believe, the second week of October. First week of October, there you go. Thank you. Actually, we have a President's Council meeting tomorrow. We're going to bring that back and make that, um, stronger than it has been the last couple of years, um, in order to coordinate and, and help clubs become bigger and, and get more people involved. And, um, as far as school spirit, our whiteout, this past Friday game was a huge hit. A lot of people showed up, and, um, it was, it was really fun for a lot of the students, and I think they had a good time. Also, the holiday night game, the, for, uh, the first game of the season, was a great hit. The, we, um, raised a lot of, I mean, a lot of people brought in a lot of toys for the Greg DeFerro Foundation, which was amazing. So, we're ready for a big year, and, um, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, our favorite part of the meeting, recognition, Mr. Sedidino, please.
Thank you, and I just want to thank, uh, Randall Anderson for being here, much like the John Quincy Adams, John Adams, the Roosevelts, and the Bushes. A relationship between him and a past president. Your sister was president three years ago?
Three years ago.
So, welcome. It's not a monarchy where you just inherit the throne, but you must have worked hard to get it, so, great job. I do want to let you know that if you're studying for anything, you can leave at this point, you can always stay, but do not feel, do not feel that we're offended if you have to go and catch up, catch up with your studies, okay? All right, so, recognition, two recognition, uh, motions tonight. One, first, we're gonna do is move the Board of Education to recognize Scott Titmus, Technology Integration Specialist at the Grade Nine Center, but he's a district-wide employee, for being selected, uh, for Microsoft Innovative Educator. This expert that he has been designated as is for use of promotional Microsoft products in the classroom. He was selected from thousands of educators across hundreds of countries, and our very own Director of Technology. Ms. Rosé Moran will come up and present him with his certificate. Mr. Titmus and Ms. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Sedidino. Scott. Expert. A noun. A person who has a comprehensive and authoritative knowledge or skill in a particular area. A synonym. Specialist. Virtuoso. Master. Or informally, ace, whiz, hotshot. Over the summer, several of our teachers embarked on a journey to earn recognition as a Microsoft Innovative Educator. A distinction earned by getting thousand points through Microsoft training. Those earning a thousand points were then invited to apply for the Microsoft Innovative Educator Expert Program. As Mr. Sedidino said, it's an exclusive program created by Microsoft to recognize global educator visionaries who are using technology to pave the way for their peers in the effective use of technology, which fosters better teaching and learning in our classrooms. Microsoft Innovative Experts, uh, applicants were then asked to submit a Microsoft Sway presentation or a detailed video explaining how they were utilizing technology to better learning and student outcomes in their classrooms. Scott Titmus submitted such a presentation detailing his use of Microsoft products and partner software. Office 365, Flipgrid, Brain Pop, and Skype. With Skype, Scott's students have virtually visited an elephant conservatory halfway around the world and interacted with George and Martha Washington, who were actually in Australia. And that is only the beginning. This August, as Mr. Sedidino stated, Scott was selected by Microsoft as a Microsoft Innovative Educator Expert from thousands of applicants in hundreds of countries around the world, one of only six in the state of New Jersey. Through Scott's assignment as Technology Integration Specialist in our school district, he is also helping not only his peers, but Microsoft by providing valuable insight and feedback as to what works in our classrooms. We take this time to recognize this achievement and to challenge Scott to maintain his MIE Expert status, as well as to encourage other classroom teachers to earn their own recognition. Congratulations, Scott, and continued success with the MIE program. Let me just turn around. They can...
Okay.
Can I, oh, can I just make a comment?
Oh, yes, you may.
Thank you very much. I would say, I was gonna say, if anyone wants to know about Mr. Titmus and all of his activities, just follow him on Twitter, and you will find that he is engaged in a lot of that, and, uh, you have to say, I even checked out Flipgrid, 'cause I was very curious of what it was, 'cause I saw all of his tweets, so, congratulations, and well deserved.
You're absolutely correct. I had the, I, I, I followed him, and then the next day, my, my Twitter homepage was blown up by everybody that follows him, and he follows, and it's all Flipgrid, it's all they talk about, so, good stuff. There's an international following. So, on Thursday evening, I received, uh, numerous text messages from Mr. Dunn, 'cause he had just attended a PTA meeting at Cooper School, and he was so blown away by a program that's there that's gonna be nominated for Promising Practice, that he wanted the Board to honor that, that tonight, and I think several other Board members might have been there as well to speak to it. So, I'll ask Mr. Dunn to go to the podium at this time, and as we have this, I'll have, um, Ms. Gramata, the principal at Cooper School, and Rebecca Badreki, the guidance counselor... Oh, I, I will, when I read it, um, go there as well. So, move the Board to recognize Leroy Gordon Cooper School Principal Kathy Gramata and Guidance Counselor Rebecca "Becky" Badreki for their community-minded project Coop's Free Little Pantry. The pantry provides food and basic hygiene necessities to area families with the protection of anonymity. The pantry operates with the mantra, "To take what you need and need, and leave what you can." The project will be submitted for Promising Practice consideration. Tonight, to hand it over is last year's Promising Practice, uh, at the podium with you. So, basically, I attended a PTA meeting on Thursday evening, and I was given a preview of an incredible program that Cooper Elementary School has put in place in Cliffwood Beach. Counselor Badreki and Principal Gramata, along with the entire staff, put together a program which is inspiring. One thing that I have to say is that, uh, Olbridge Public Schools are a community-based schools. We have schools within our neighborhoods, and, and what Cooper Elementary School is doing exemplifies the goodness of our community. And what's happening there is, through Coop's Free Little Pantry, they're going to be helping and assisting their community, the Cliffwood Beach community, with providing a resource which is very valuable, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I just wanted to make it known immediately, since the iron was hot, and that I didn't want to go 30 days without making this known, but I am very proud of our community, specifically Principal, Principal Gramata and Counselor Badreki, along with the entire Cooper School community, is because they are going way beyond, way above what's required, but they feel that they need to give the services for their community. And with that, I want to sincerely thank them, and I know that there's going to be a, an R, R-inspiring, uh, video which we're going to show this evening, which basically puts the entire program in, in perspective, and it, it was definitely something I wanted to share, and that's why I asked Dave Sedidino, along with my colleagues on the Board of Education, to amend the agenda to include this, because I felt it was very, very important that we prove that we are a community-based, neighborhood-based, uh, school system. With that said, also, on the behalf of myself and my colleagues on the Board of Education, we are gonna be presenting to you this evening a gift card for $100, so that you could supply your little pantry and give the community what's necessary, um, going forward. So, with that said, I want to show the video, and I want to recognize all your wonderful contributions to the Cliffwood Beach community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Do, do we want to roll the video, please?
The video?
Yeah, absolutely. There you go.
That'll be good. That'll be all right. Yeah, careful. It's a minute.
You're it.
No fair. You're it.
No, you're it. You're it.
So hungry.
Me too.
Do you remember any snacks in the house?
No, she didn't go food shopping yet.
I did.
I know.
What?
Have a Coop's Free Little Pantry.
Down at Cooper School?
Yes.
Let's go.
Don't forget your helmet.
Responsibility.
Let's go.
Do it.
Hi, Mr. George.
Hi, girls.
Hi.
Make sure you keep your helmets on.
We will.
Safety first, and have fun.
Bye.
Bye.
Awesome. Come on, let's go. Woo-hoo. Coop's Free Little Pantry. Take what you need and leave what you can.
Cool.
Awesome.
Let's eat, let's eat this.
Yes.
Awesome. And when my mom goes shopping, we'll donate some items back.
Great idea.
Let's go.
Woo!
Oh, God, this baby is so hungry. Oh, my God, I don't have any more milk. Girls, I need your help, girls.
What's going on?
Oh, girls, I need your help. This baby won't stop crying, and I haven't had her milk.
I don't know.
Coop's Free Little Pantry.
We'll be back in a little bit.
Let's go.
Okay. Is there baby food in here?
Perfect.
Awesome.
Let's go.
Make sure it's closed tightly. Don't you feel better now? 'Cause the girl's got you your milk. Thank God for Coop's Little Pantry.
Now I have a happy baby.
Mmm.
I'm so happy our moms went shopping.
Yes, now we can donate items to the food pantry.
Donate.
Perfect.
In the toilet.
In the toilet.
Awesome.
Take what you need, leave what you can.
Coop's Free Little Pantry.
Take what you need, leave what you can.
Let's help our community by paying it forward.
And as you can see, their unique perspective and their, uh, public service message, which the high school, uh, assisted with, uh, and I want to thank them for doing such a wonderful video. They're committed to their community, and evident based upon, on, on their little public service message, they are truly involved in their community, and that's what we want from all schools, and we've gotten that from all of our schools. So, with that, I want to congratulate you again for your energy and, and your, your approach to, to assisting not only the educational needs of, of your neighborhood, but also with, with the entire family needs as well. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
That's great, so just a summary of, because people couldn't hear you at home. So, it is open, people have been using it, and it's not just for people in need, it's for people who need something that particular day, for whatever reason. And if they want to return something back, they can, and you've seen that, people have been taking stuff and recycling new stuff through, so, great job on serving the community.
Mr. Mara?
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Absolutely, yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, one through three pass.
Okay, Mr. Sedidino, you're on again, superintendent's report.
So I have two items under the superintendent's report, neither of which require me to do much presenting, so that's nice. The first we're gonna have is, Mr. Mara's gonna give us update on the project, the ESIP projects that we've had over the summer, let us know where we're at, if we're up to speed, if there's timing, anything. And then we'll have Dr. Gascon gives us just the board an update, and the public an update on the Education Foundation and its rebirth. So I would just wanna, before Mr. Mara goes into it, just, great opening this year, I wanna thank everyone from our schools, whether it be our maintenance, custodial staff, transportation, always, on those first days, it's difficult, and working through to make sure our students are safe, that's the most important thing. Whether they picked up a little late or dropped off a little late, that our students arrive to their destinations and to their homes safe. My practice is, and my mantra is, that every day we return our students home a little bit better than we received them in the morning. And if we can do that, then we're completing that mission. My administrative team, we've been out to every school within the first two days, I think we set a record this year, getting to all seventeen learning institutions within two days. And the schools look brilliant, the students, the teachers have their bulletin boards up and everything all ready to go, and I've never seen the schools looking better. We had, you know, up against the wall with Carl Sandberg this year, a lot of work went on there, and everyone who was involved in getting that open on time and ready to run should be commended. So I will let Mr. Mara take it from there, because it ties right into the projects.
Thank you, Mr. Sedidino. I've actually expanded this to cover all the projects, or many of the projects that we did over the summer. So the Old Bridge Township Public School District has been undergoing a series of renovations and technology upgrades totaling more than twenty million dollars over the past few months. These projects are as follows: sixteen point two million dollars of an energy savings improvement plan, which I'll refer to going forward as an ESIP, one point seven million of district-wide technology upgrades, nine hundred thousand dollars of security upgrades, six hundred thousand dollars with the installation of an emergency generator at Carl Sandberg School, six hundred thousand dollars upgrading the entire electrical service in the Carl Sandberg Middle School, and a hundred thousand dollars for modifications to two of our playgrounds at Sandberg, at Carpenter and Southwood. The status of each of these projects at this point, the ESIP project, all the schools have been retrofitted with LED, energy-efficient lights. That project is ninety percent complete. Every school has a new computer power management system, that project is a hundred percent complete. We're doing roof replacements at eight buildings, that project is seventy percent complete. We're also doing, and again, we're installing everything that's current technology, so it's most energy-efficient, we're installing boilers and transformers in all our buildings. That, the target for those completions will be October fifteenth, that's seventy-five to eighty percent complete. All the schools have been winterized, windows, doors, to save on energy, that's a hundred percent complete. And every school is having the control system modified for heating and HVAC, that's about fifty percent complete. Once the roofs are completed, five buildings will have solar panels to generate solar energy on their roofs. Those schools are Old Bridge High School, the Grade Nine Center, Jonas Salk Middle School, Memorial, Cooper, and Voorhees. And the solar panels should save us a considerable amount of money over the next fifteen years. Technology upgrades, in the form of computers, network infrastructure, one point seven million dollars, that is two-thirds completed at this point, and will be ongoing through the end of December. As we speak, we're receiving new equipment each day. The security upgrades, I won't go into details about what they were, but they're ninety-five percent complete at this point. The emergency generator and electrical upgrades at Carl Sandberg Middle School is ninety-nine percent complete. These, that project required the middle school to be without power the entire summer. The generator project, which was six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, was, we received a grant for six hundred thousand dollars towards that project, so the taxpayer got a big benefit from that. And all of the electrical panels, all the electrical services into the Carl Sandberg Middle School have now been upgraded to current technology. The playground upgrades are beginning now, and they, and they're, the upgrades are at Carpenter and Southwood, and they should be done by the end of October. And finally, I'd like to commend Frank Frazita, Frazita, the Director of Plant Services, and Mike Milliman, the District Architect, for their well-coordinated effort in overseeing all of these projects, and Honeywell, the Energy Services Company that's managing all of the ESIP projects. Thank you, Mr. Sedidino.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Any questions from the board on those items? Okay. Dr. Gascon, can you go to the dais and give us an update on the Ed Foundation and its financial endeavors?
Good evening, board members, Mr. Sedidino, Dr. Hoker, Mr. Barton, members of the public. It's my pleasure and privilege to be here to talk a little bit about the rebirth, if you will, of the Old Bridge Township Education Foundation. But before I talk about that, I'd just like to publicly thank all those folks who have been involved in the organization in the past. I know that it was, a lot of people were very committed to it in the past and did some great work in fundraising. And although we had to use some of our treasury to kind of get back reinstated with various agencies, there still were funds remaining in our treasury that we're gonna be able, that we've been able to use to fund some of our initiatives and to fund the grants that are coming up. So I'd like to thank all those people who were a part of the foundation in its previous incarnations that left it there for us to kind of pick up back with. So the reason for the presentation is that, at a, I believe it was at an agenda meeting last year, some board members expressed an interest in just kind of hearing from the OBF, and a little bit about kind of what our mission is and what some of our plans are. Now, at that time, we were still developing a number of things, but after a summer of planning and getting together, we're obviously moving full steam ahead. So I'm speaking to you as the Executive Director of the Old Bridge Education Foundation. Our executive board is made up of Mr. Daley, John Daley, Principal of Madison Park Elementary School, Karen Lango is our Vice President, she's the District Grant Writer with whom we share with the township, and plays a vital role in kind of having that collaborative relationship with the township of Old Bridge. Kim Castain is our Treasurer, and she's here tonight. I'd like to thank Kim, she's did a lot of great work with her background in accounting to help us get the organization back in good stead financially. And Mary Ann Velegas, who's now Salk, right, Salk teacher, or Salk, yeah, Salk teacher, longtime Madison Park, now at Salk, and we're really, really happy to have her on board as Secretary, longtime teacher in the district, outstanding individual and very detail-oriented. So we're fortunate to have her on board as well. Of course, our Superintendent, Mr. Sedidino, and Dr. Hoker, our trustees ex officio. And you can see that we've recently finalized the rest of our Board of Trustees, who are listed there on the left, Andrew Buceta, our own board member Jill Callie, who's serving as a community representative, a name many people recognize, our Freon, who was very integral in the foundation in its past, Lance Hifman from the community, Denise Lombardi, our K-5 Supervisor of Special Education, Deborah Reed, who's a paraprofessional in the district, Dr. Simon, Principal of Sandberg School, Sony Stetson, who is also a para, and then we have one of our teachers, Emma Lwansek, who is gonna be joining us. So, as you can see, our mission, Old Bridge Education Foundation is an independent nonprofit organization existing solely for the benefit of the schoolchildren in Old Bridge. The Foundation awards grants for original and creative ideas submitted by students and teachers for worthwhile projects that will enhance the education in Old Bridge. After meeting this summer, we decided that we were going to have two grant windows over the course of the year, we'd have a fall window, which in fact is, we're excited to announce, is open, and we do have teachers that are now submitting grants, which the, we'll bring our full board together on September twenty-eighth for the first time with all our trustees, and then again in early November to vote on our first grant recipients, and then we'll do that again in the latter part of the year, I believe February will open it, and the grants will be awarded in April. So I know a lot of folks are excited that that's back up. We had gotten a lot of inquiries, even over the summer, folks inquiring as to how they could do that. And as most of you know, our main fundraiser this year is we're raffling the Audi Q3, beautiful automobile, and you can see those are various events at which we've already been, or ones that we will be at moving forward. And so, to the public, any support that you could give to this raffle, if you see the car and the OBF representing at an event, we encourage you to buy a ticket, all the proceeds do go back to our kids and our schools for fantastic projects that we can't necessarily fund, or are not fundable through the local budget, and that we can do so through our nonprofit. So, that's a little bit about us, just, any questions the board had? I'll have to take that up with the publisher of the flyer, but we'll get them corrected, Mr. De Prima. This was really just more of an informational handout for the board to kind of go follow along with the talking points, but certainly we'll get them corrected. And of course, the raffle drawing, we're excited about this, May seventeenth, Friendly's, we're kind of envisioning it being kind of a neat kind of fanfare-type of community event, where we have a lot of people turning out to see if they won the car, so, yes.
So, Dr. Gascon, I have just two questions. So one, how are you communicating to the staff about this, so they're aware? And, okay, three. And then there are specific guidelines that they have to follow, or is it pretty open that they can just explain their project? And then, how are we gonna notify everybody, so that we can share across the district of the projects that people are working on and things like that? I think it's great.
Sure. As the Executive Director, and one of my roles is, you know, and not necessarily being saddled with, you know, the responsibilities that come with managing a building, you know, like Mr. Daley has as Principal, so I kind of take the lead in a lot of the communication. So I recently emailed the entire district faculty, alerting them that the grant window was open. We designed a digital form, which was, we made some modifications to the existing grant form, but some of the questions that are on that grant form are, you know, a short description of the project, how it'll benefit the district, how it can perhaps be replicated in other places. And so there's a number of questions on that. We're also in the process of developing an evaluation rubric, which the trustees will use on the night that we evaluate the grants, to score them. So we kind of have an objective evaluation measure, you know, for each of the, try and remove some of the subjectivity from the evaluation process. And in terms of, once folks receive that, I mean, they will obviously be informed individually, there will be some communication via the district communications, but we also envision, you know, doing press releases and things of that nature to inform the public of who the recipients were. Yeah. Okay. So, any other questions, you're, you know, you know where to find me, and I'm more than happy to chat more about the Foundation with you. So thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I guess progress towards goals was incorporated into that. Correspondence, Mr. Mara?
No correspondence.
No correspondence. Special committee reports. Colleagues? Starting on this side? Nope. Okay. Facilities juice, everybody, you got it last week at the agenda meeting, it was in your packet. Hearing of residents, agenda items only. Nobody? Okay, moving on. Policy, Mr. Singh is not present tonight, we have a policy meeting scheduled, October fifth. That will be publicized, if anybody wants to join us. Okay, moving on. Curriculum, professional development, items one through eight. We have a motion, please?
Adriani will move.
Ms. Adriani, a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ellis Foster, discussion or questions? No hands, Mr. Mara?
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one through eight pass.
Athletics, item number one. Motion, please?
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Second.
And Mr. Weber. Mr. Mara?
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, moving on. Finance, items one through fifteen, but I think we have to have a separation here? Okay, a motion first, items one through fifteen, please.
Dunn will move, finance, items one through fifteen, Mr. President.
Mr. Dunn, in a second?
Dineoff, one second.
Nope, sorry. I'm sorry, Jeff?
We'll do it together.
Okay, now we separate?
Yeah, can we separate number twelve for discussion and for voting?
Okay. Anything else? All right, Mr. Mara, items one through eleven and thirteen through fifteen, roll call, please. One through eleven, thirteen through fifteen.
Ellis Foster? This is one through eleven, thirteen through fifteen.
Yes, however, I'd like to abstain on the first line, item of number six.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one through eleven and thirteen through fifteen, pass.
Okay, item number twelve, under finance, discussion?
I just wanna just again, once again, thank everybody involved in the negotiation process. It was a long eight months, we had a lot of late nights, but I think the tone and the partnership was, on both sides, was exceptional. And I would also like, I know the salary guides were done, and so I'd like to thank the staff and Mr. Mara's office for getting that done, because the sooner we get this done, the sooner we can put all of the increases and the actions in place. So, I just again, just wanna thank everybody.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to say that negotiations is never a simple, smiling process, and it has to be give and take on both sides. And I appreciate the work that Mrs. Ellis Foster did as the Chair of the Negotiations Committee. Mr. De Prima, Mr. Singh, myself were on the committee, there were quite a few nights, quite a few meetings, our lawyer was present at all of them, Mr. Mara, it's a lot of work on our side, as well as all of the bargaining units. So I appreciate all of the time and effort that all the people on all the negotiating teams put forth, so that we could start the year off on a positive note. Thank you.
You and Mrs. Adriani, anybody else? I'm gonna ask Mr. Barton to explain the voting for number twelve, since there's some conflicts.
Yeah, Ms., thank you, Mr. De Prima. Mr. Reed, Ms. Callie, and Mr. Dunn are conflicted from voting on this, so we have six eligible members, five of whom are here, under your bylaws and under the law, all you need is a simple majority of those present, eligible, and voting. So with that said, you can go to Mr. Mara.
Mr. Mara, please. Thank you, Mr. Barton.
So each of those three members will abstain?
That's correct, on number twelve.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed? Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes. Abstain.
Dunn?
Abstain.
Dineoff?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolution twelve passes.
Okay, non-certificated personnel office, item number one. Motion, please?
Callie will move.
Ms. Callie, second?
I'll move it. Your second?
Ellis Foster. Discussion, questions?
Just one item, Mr. De Prima, on the registered nurses line, that should reflect nine-one-seventeen instead of seven-one-seventeen.
Okay, Mr. Mara, roll call.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolution one pass.
Moving on, non-certificated personnel operational, item number one, motion, please?
I'll move it.
Callie, second?
Adriani.
Discussion, questions? Mr. Mara?
Weber? Adriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Non-certificated personnel other, items one through fourteen. Have a motion, please?
Reed would like to move, non-certificated personnel, one through fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, second?
Second.
Mr. Weber. Discussion?
Mr. De Prima, again, there are a couple of these through the agenda tonight, Mrs. Callie and Mr. Reed need to abstain on item number one only, under this section.
Okay, Mr. Mara?
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes, except abstaining from number one.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes, abstain from number one.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one through fourteen, pass.
Okay, certificated personnel, items one through sixteen, I need a motion, I think there's gonna be some abstentions on this one also? Okay, let's move, make the motion first, items one to sixteen.
I'll move it.
Dineoff, one second.
You might as well explain it.
Yeah, for the same reason, Mr. De Prima, Mr. Dunn needs to abstain on item number Oh, and I'm sorry, and on number two, the three board members who have in district employee family members, Mr. Dunn, Mrs. Callie, and Mr. Reed, all need to abstain on number
Yeah, can we just separate number two for voting for discussion?
Separate number two? Anybody else? Okay, so, item number one, Mr. Mara, all eligible board members. Well, she said, yeah, I'm sorry, one, number one, and three through sixteen, I apologize.
Adriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Dunn abstains on number one, and yes, through three through sixteen.
Also abstain number two.
When that, number two was separated.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Reed abstains from number one, and yes, under this.
Weber?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Okay, items one and three through sixteen, pass.
Okay, item number two, discussion or questions?
Well, just for the public's notice of what the board has done, is, you know, in light of the sunset of the cap on the superintendent's salary, the board exercised its right to review and amend Mr. Sedidino's contract. So, what this is doing is, we're recommending we adjust and extend it for another total of five years through two thousand and twenty-two, which is in line with our new strategic plan. So, it was just doing that.
Everybody up here understands all that, right? If you weren't part of the... Okay, so...
Mr. President?
Please?
Yes, even though I am conflicted, and I can't vote on number two, I just wanna reaffirm the fact that David Sedidino is an incredible part of this district, along with his administration. And I feel personally that we wouldn't have come this far without his stewardship. So even though I cannot vote and approve number two and his extension, but I wanna make it known to my fellow board members that I think he is the catalyst of this school district, I think that he has done an incredible job, and I implore you to vote yes, and I just wanna tell Dave thank you, well deserved, and we're looking forward to another incredible, prosperous five years.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I think Mr. Barton has to interrupt here for a second.
Interrupt?
Clarify. This is a personnel appointment action, so you do need five votes in support of it. You have, by happy coincidence, you have five eligible members with Mr. Singh not present, so the, for the motion to pass, you do need five.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Anybody else, anything to say about this? I think we're all gonna echo Mr. Dunn's words. Thank you, Mr. Sedidino, for everything you've done and where you've brought us. Mr. Mara, number two.
Callie?
Abstain.
Dunn? Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Abstain.
Weber?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolution two passes, and congratulations to Mr. Cedidino.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Non-certificated personnel transportation, items one through five. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis Foster, second?
Cali.
Ms. Cali. Discussion or questions? Mr. Mara?
Cali?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five, pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services, items one to three. Motion, please?
Dunn will move.
Mr. Dunn?
Dineoff will second.
Mr. Dineoff. Discussion? Mr. Mara?
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Cali?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three, pass.
Before you move on, I didn't get a chance for discussion. Since all of these are for sale, donation, or disposal, if we do not sell them, is it possible that any of these are books that we could give to the library? I don't know if these are books that the library could use in their mini, mini library areas around? I don't know if textbooks are appropriate or not, just asking.
Before we dispose them, we usually work through a number of charitable organizations that, if they're not needed locally, and they may be needed in areas such as Houston area right now, Southern Florida area, where schools were decimated, and there's just books that are inside them, or all got wet. So, we'll look for local funds first, and then if not, we do have sources that ship them out internationally. Thank you.
Transportation, excuse me, items one through six. Motion, please?
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Second.
Mr. Weber. Discussion or questions? Mr. Mara?
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Cali?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one through...
Okay, miscellaneous, items one through seven. Motion, please?
Dunn will move miscellaneous, one through seven, Mr. President.
Mr. Dunn, and a second?
Dineoff will second.
Mr. Dineoff. Discussion, questions, anybody? Mr. Mara?
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Cali?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one through seven, pass.
Just, again, one second. We go so fast with the discussion. Number five in this section, for the Board of Ed to approve the submission of the revised lead testing, that seems to be a topic that comes up often enough, so I just thought that perhaps somebody might want to make mention of our assurance, before we move on.
The statement of assurance is just that, it was a change by the Department of Education requirements for statement of assurance. We've already submitted a statement of assurance under their previous requirement, and then they made a modification to some slight verbiage, we had to readjust and send it out. But I know there were some conversations out there, in reference to the lead testing. I think the number is 376 schools across the state were subject to having findings in this lead water testing, and while that never sits on face value of being very reassuring to anyone who has children in the schools, I do want you to know that we do take this seriously. We have been doing testing even prior to them requiring the testing, and the testing standards are so stringent, that, you know, a lot of times, findings would come up, that you would find even in your own house exceeding the lead standards, if you tested areas like they tested, that were not water consumption areas, like areas like a slop sink in a custodial closet. If it's never used, you're gonna build up lead in the water when you first turn it, and the testing must take place at first sample, when you first turn the water on. So areas where the water is never used, and it's sitting for long periods of time, that would come up. And in those areas where any of those findings were, we've either taken the water offline, because it was areas that were never being used anyway, and I can speak from experience that, two places, Jonas Salk School and Grade 9 Center, they're sister schools, under the same blueprint, and they had, every classroom has a sink. Now, some of the teachers haven't seen those sinks in years, because they're covered with books or anything else, they're not used as lab classrooms, all of them, you know, English classroom, or what have you, or maybe it's used just to water the plant in there, but no one is drinking the water out of those sinks in the classrooms, or doing any cooking with them. So they're used so seldomly, that when they do the testing, you have water that's been sitting for long periods of time, and it came up. So we just took those waters off, those water sources offline, because no one was using them anyway. In areas where people might be using them, that we couldn't take them offline, we've replaced either the fixture, or put new filtration systems in, and have remediated every situation and every place where the lead water had come above the recommended amount by the Department of Education. So, when you see that letter that came out, it's not like we had findings and we're thinking about what to do. Before you even had the letter in your hand, we've already addressed it, remediated, and either taken the water source offline, put new systems in, or added high-performance lead filters into the area. So, if anyone has questions about that, please see me after the meeting, or, you know, you can always call my office. I know there's a lot of speculation and hyperbole on social media about what's going on with lead water and testing, and so I can answer your questions more succinctly for you and precisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cedidino. And yes, please don't just go by what you read on social media. Social media could be a positive, but it could also be a big negative. Okay. Moving on. Board Secretary and Board Business, item number one. Motion?
I'll move it.
Cali, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Cali. Discussion, questions? Mr. Mara?
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Cali?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolution one.
Hearing of residents, any school district item? Anybody? No hearing, no, nobody? Okay. Old business, new business, colleagues?
I'll just say something. I would like to obviously thank the board for the support and the public, but more importantly, I want to thank the business office, and the personnel office, and in my office, Marjorie O'Connor, for, in a very expeditious fashion, getting the new salary guide statements on the agenda, only following the memorandum agreement that we voted on, like, three pages earlier, to have that up there in that fashion that quickly, so that it's more expeditiously how the, our staff get the new monies from the negotiations, is nice. It wasn't easy to do for them, I'm sure, but they did it, and, you know, when something is not correct in someone's salary statement, they're the first ones to take the heat and get beat up for it. So I want to congratulate them and thank them for, when they do something and work hard, to make sure that everyone is recognized with the appropriate salary, in reflection of the memorandum agreement, as quickly as possible. Thank you. Good job. Mr. President?
Please?
I just want to quickly acknowledge a few people for a incredible opening day of school.